We're going to call the Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, April 3, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Can we have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yeah.
Mayor Van Bosh.
City Manager Reeves.
Here.
Can I have a motion to excuse the mayor? She's got really sick, so we didn't want her here.
So moved.
We just hope she gets better. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We don't have any presentation proclamation recognition. Public comment. This is the time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the city commission on any topic. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record and be heard. No commissioner, department head, or city staff will respond. The city manager will follow up on the public comments as necessary, and please limit your comments to five minutes, and please direct all comments to me as the meeting chairperson. And please refrain from using use of profanity, and please do not direct any comments to any other members of the public. Does anybody wish to speak? You're on.
I lived in East Point for many, many years and decided I had to move. And luckily, I moved to Marine City, which was a godsend, if you all know, except this guy here. And my neighbor on the right side of, left side of me has a garage. Well, actually, a gentleman named Kenny used to live there. He passed on, and his daughter moved in. Well, the garage is, I don't know if you've seen the pictures of the garage.
I'm familiar with the house.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
It's really a mess. It's a reading ground for, I've had a skunk in my backyard. I call them stinky. And then I have, I seen a possum. The lady next door to him was trapping a lot of varieties of animals. So really, and I talked to the fire marshal over there, and he said, "It's a fire hazard." So I started with this probably a year ago. Went to City Hall and talked to ladies, and they said it's moving along the, what'd he call it, the progress of government moves kind of slow, so hopefully that we can get this thing resolved and get it out of here. Also, I was told that, matter of fact, what they did is they rented a dumpster, a big dumpster. I'm thinking, hey, this is great, it's going to be going. The dumpster sat there for, I believe, let's just say, two months, three months. The dumpster's gone, the garage's still there. And so I went back to City Hall and talked a little bit. Well, here I am. Here we are. As a matter of fact, this gentleman here, look.
I come very near here, so.
His name's Jim.
Everything's living in there.
He has, he's, he got the backside of it, I got the side of it, and it's really a mess. It really is. I know everybody that I see, most of the people around here, they really keep their places up and it looks really nice. So, and then my friend Jim over there said he heard them talking, because he was in a backyard doing something, and he heard them talking, well, we're going to take this down, but it's still up, so hopefully the city can do something about it.
What's the address? Just the 149?
This is 149, yeah.
Okay.
This is on our agenda. We're going to discuss demolition of that garage. Okay?
That's great.
So it's later in the agenda, but we will be discussing it, and it's going to move forward, and he'll give us a report on that. So if you guys would want to stay, and then if there's any additional questions we might have for you, then we can ask you at that time.
Okay, that's good. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Curtis McBride. I'm actually here this evening on behalf of the Marine City Scholarship Foundation. So you have an item on your consent agenda to approve a resolution for a charitable gaming license for our group. So I figured if you're being asked to approve that, I should describe who we are and what we do. We started in 1986. This is something that's very important to me personally, because my father was one of the founders of our group back in 1986. Quite simply, our mission is to provide scholarships to Marine City High School seniors who are pursuing an education after high school. So since 1986, we've actually awarded about $800,000 to over 900 students in that period of time. So that's a number we're very proud of, and of course, we're trying to continue that on, carry on the tradition and the legacy that was started for us back almost 40 years ago. So what we're going to do is, we actually have a fundraiser at Water Street Winery on Wednesday, April 30 at 6:00 PM, and we'll be holding raffles there at that event. So that's why we're asking you to approve a resolution for the charitable gaming license. Again, please share the information with the public. Again, it's Wednesday, April 30 at Water Street Winery at 6:00 PM. There will be samples of beer and wine, and it'll also be catered by Nieman's Catering. So thank you for your time. That's all I wanted to say, and thank you also for your consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else? Nothing? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on. Can I have a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of March 20, 2025?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion for the consent agenda, items A through C. So can I have a motion from someone for that?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, letters A through C.
Support.
Okay. I need a roll call vote. Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on. We're doing financial business, so I need a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll.
I'll make a motion.
Can you give us the motion?
I wouldn't have made the motion if I knew I had to say that.
Support.
All right. Any discussion on any of the expenditures?
I believe the amount is $1,241,000, not 14, sorry.
No, you're, like I said, that's why I don't.
Yep. No, those numbers get us.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call. Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. I need a motion to set the public hearing date for the budget and the water rates for in May. Do we have a, do we have a date?
That'd be up to you, either the first or the 15th, or your two meetings in May. And just by the charter, it has to be adopted in May.
Okay.
Doesn't give a specific.
What's the first meeting in May?
May 1st.
Okay.
I did talk with the treasurer today, too, and she was okay with either date.
Okay. So can I have a motion to set the public hearing date for the budget and the water rates for May 1st?
So just real quick, I will not be here the first meeting in May, so.
We can move it to the second. What's the second meeting?
15th.
Okay. How about that one?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
The last meeting this month and the first meeting in May, I have to, I am out of town.
Okay, that's fine.
And that may afford us time to finish the water rate study that you've asked for. They're working on it now.
All right, so I need it for the May 15 meeting.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the budget and water rates for May 15 at our regular scheduled meeting of 7:00 o'clock.
Support.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, roll call vote. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. I need a motion to adopt the goals for the 2025 as presented.
So moved. Support.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, we need a roll call vote for that. Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. Moving right along here, we need, we have a property list next, so you want to explain that first?
Yes, so this is a project I had the code enforcement officer work when we discovered that a number of properties and right of ways did not have deeds. If you look, it's a pretty diverse group of properties. I don't think a lot of them very candidly require a deed, but there are some of note that we probably should have a deed for that property, especially those that have structures on them. What I can do, if you'd like, you've had an opportunity to review this, I'll condense those to the ones that perhaps we should consider a deed for, and then try to obtain a cost total for those deeds, and then I can bring it back to the board, and then you guys can make the decision on those.
Okay.
I can prioritize those. So as an example, and I didn't look in here real quick, but if there's one in here for the library, we have a deed for the library, but if there was no deed, the city cemetery has no deed. Is that a property that we should receive a deed for or should not receive a deed for? Those are one of the things that we should look for. Museum, things like that. There's no deed for the King Road Park. Is that property that we should have a deed for or not have a deed for? So I'll make a list and prioritize the ones that are significant and bring them back to you, and with the cost of what it would cost us to put those under deed, and you can make a decision at that point, if that's okay with you folks.
Could you maybe prioritize some things you think we should get a deed for first, like?
I can't. Some, like parks are important only because of a lot of grant applications that ask, is the land deeded to us? Are we the rightful, you know, that, we sometimes request to produce that type of stuff. They check the county parcels to see if it's, you know, deeded property, but I can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, then, you know, maybe street ends we could do later or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, street ends, there's nothing that gets built there anyway at this point. We don't allow that type of thing. We really only have one that Commissioner Hendrick brought to my attention that's of significant size, where something could go there, but it's adjacent to the water, so obviously we don't want anything in that location.
And all the street ends are, that falls under like the state for water access, so.
I was just thinking, depending on the cost of getting them, we should get the most important ones first.
Yeah.
Okay, give me a little bit of time in this. It probably won't come back to the next meeting, because it'll take some research.
Okay. Do you need any motion?
Table.
If you just table, it would be fine.
Okay.
For a future meeting.
Make a motion to table.
Support.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, roll call. Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, 300 Broadway, discussion. City manager.
So we, I haven't had a significant amount of time to delve a great deal into the property of 300 Broadway. I will tell you that in going through city documents that were provided to me by the clerk, this wouldn't be the first time that the sale of city property has been brought upon by the commission, and you actually went through the same process for 303 Water, and had a broker represent you. That sale was successful. That's one of the brokers I actually talked to. So I've had some ongoing discussions with multiple commercial brokers who have experience in historic buildings or redevelopment projects or mixed development projects that have the ability to attract attention across the nation or across the world. So in order to attract a wide variety of people, I've tried to look for somebody that operates within a spectrum that's not just confined, if you will, to say, to Marine City, or to St. Clair County, or just to the state of Michigan. As I've moved forward in that process, I've had a couple broker realtors walk through the property, I've had two developers walk through the property, I've had an architect already walk through the property, and we've had a lot of ideas exchanged. I did have an offer to have some renditions drawing done, which would include, and this one person's idea, and he didn't commit to the project or anything like that, but his idea was a mixed-use development, maintaining the building, obviously rehabilitating it. It would have mixed use, including loft living, it would have some light commercial, maybe a coffee shop, or a daycare center, something of that nature, and there'd be a public use part of the building as well. So the idea, keeping the facility, and then around the property, he had Cluster Townhouse Home that would match that same type of style around that area of the building, and that's how he would get the return on the investment needed. In addition, I'm working with the EDA, Dan Casey, and trying to put together a package from the state of Michigan through multiple different parties, MEDC, RAP Grant, DNR, Acquisition Grant, NHTSA, CDBG Funds, CHEPO, amongst others, to see what we could line up as an incentive package in terms of that building. There are a couple issues that will have to be addressed, and I don't have a whole lot of information on some of these, because I just ran out of time. Very candidly, one of our first concerns is that there's the appearance of what may be contamination inside the building. That has to, when you think of that, you have to have a study done in order to facilitate that. I've obtained quotes, I've asked for four quotes, I've received two, three back, excuse me, two back, one for $4,100, and the other one was $3,750, but that one included multiple samples, up to 100 samples at $25 each on the samples. So the inspection was like $1,900, and the samples was still less than the $4,100, which didn't include the samples. So basically, for $4,000, I can have the building tested, the samples returned, and then we can have a determination what the issues may be with the building. We're mandated and required by law to take care of those issues and remediate any issues prior to sale, or as part of the sale, or demolition, that would be required. So as an example, let's say it was asbestos wrapping on a pipe. At that age of building, sometimes that was utilized in certain areas. Lead paint would be another one, but the plaster you might consider might be in a building of that age. They'd take those samples, we'd get some confirmation. With that report, then I could go and obtain remediation costs. What's it take to take care of this contamination? What's the cost to remove lead paint, remove asbestos, whatever, if there is anything, okay? We'll finally put that to rest, that's been a rumor or, you know, myth, let's put it to rest, let's do some testing, and then I can get some prices of remediation. I did receive a, I had a couple companies look at it in terms of demolition. I do have a price that was provided to me for demolition, we're quite a ways from even concerning stuff like that, but in terms of my full focus on this thing, I have to look at it from all sides. Where I'm at today, I've had a couple realtor brokers that were interested and then declined to participate, quite large companies. I have one that's mewling it over with their office staff and some groups that they participate in on a nationwide call on commercial buildings and redevelopment, and he's going to get back to me next week in terms of that. I'm looking for the following direction from the board. One, I'd like authorization to have the testing done, not to exceed, let's say, $4,000. That should cover the cost of the one I quoted you. The second one was to allow me to continue to interview and locate the potential for broker, commercial realtors that have experience in large development of historic properties, or large development or redevelopment of existing properties, and also give me the opportunity to ascertain through that process what the value is of the building as it currently stands, what's the value of the property that sits on, which is greater, or is there any value in the building or any value in the property? There's been a lot of numbers associated with the building and the property for many years. I'd like to get something on paper, so then before we go back and let's say, agree to a broker, agree to anything, we have some numbers we can work with and say, okay, this is what we're told, let's put our brains together, maybe have a workshop or a study session and talk about the parameters. The one number we, I'm focused on, laser focused on in the back of my head is $12 million, $11.3 million. That's to bring it up to standards. There's a rough issue I told you about, we haven't been able to get somebody up to yet, we don't know if it's animals or water issue, and we're told there's a failing heat exchanger in one of the furnaces there. The one in the teen room seems to be operating, it appears to be a newer one, I think it's the older one in the other part of the building. You know we have significant issues in keeping the building heat in the wintertime, especially with dramatic weather. We're getting heat thaw changes, which is causing discharge on the both water and dry fire systems. We've had both those this year. So I've got to keep that in mind as I work forward. It may get to a point that I have to invest some more money in order to keep the fire suppression system operating in order for us to move forward on the building. But the ultimate goal here is as minimal money as I can in order to keep the building as it is in its current state without incurring more damage, and in addition, work this process through. I'm available to answer any questions if you'd like, if you, in terms of what I've discussed or who I've talked to. Some ask that it be confidential in terms of my discussion. They had other business entities or cities that they may represent, and so that's some of the things they're kind of working their way through, I think, in terms of conflicts.
Have any of them mentioned the fact that the historic district is an issue for them?
They've mentioned it. There are ways that that can be dealt with, and it's a parkland, I have talked to the city attorney in terms of, okay, if the land is the more valuable of the two, and it's determined that you wanted to do a mixed-use development on the land, or you wanted to sell the land for housing, or whatever you make them up with. How do we decertify that as a park and take the land itself back? There's a process that the city attorney will outline at the right time in terms of that. We'd have to go back to the state and indicate that the city at this time, or, you know, is going to ask to have the historic withdrawn, because the city can't afford at this point to maintain, or to correct the issues that are inherent in the building. That would be a process as it will. I haven't got to that, because I don't believe we're at that point. I want to make sure that I'm methodically checking off options and checking with the right people, and seeing what I can do. As I told you, I wanted to drive this from a mixed-use development, keeping the building, keeping the best of both worlds, until absolutely they told me that's not an option, and this is the options. One of the things that a couple of people told me is, instead of me providing renderings, which were beautiful, don't pigeonhole the project to prospective people throughout the country. Let them bring their visions to you. So if you think your parameters are housing and keeping the building, they may say something totally different. Don't predetermine that in their minds, and they say, well, that concept doesn't fit what I want to do. As an example, I interviewed the developer and head construction company that did the state of Michigan mental hospital in Traverse City. We had a very long conversation, and if you know, that's a historic facility that's going under a massive renovation, and it's a mixture of condos and businesses, and it's going to be senior house living, and they've got it really laid out in phases, and I learned quite a bit from them, and they've been very helpful. So it's a big reach, and I won't get it done right away, I'm working on it every day and having those conversations, but it's just something that's going to take us a little bit of time. I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time, get this stuff going while working on this, trying to get the developers walking through the building, I got them looking at it, get a broker developer on the line, get it published out so everybody knows about the opportunity, invite in people to come and look at it. What do you see? What's your vision for this building? What could it be, keeping the building, doing this and that? And then see what, see what the, as they say, see what the internet brings us, see what the, what the world thinks of that building, of that property, and what the opportunities are, and then down the road, you'll have a decision to make.
Couple of follow-up questions on this. Is it possible with any of these private brokers or sales and structures they're doing, potentially including, you know, stylistic townhouses connected, that we maintain a historic district on the site externally, like on the outside of it?
Anything's possible.
From those conversations, are any of them interested in something like that?
One is familiar with that type of work and has done that before.
Okay.
That's all to be determined.
Sure.
Very candidly, it would have to, the words of the day are always, Mike, where's my return on the investment? How do I get my, three lofts aren't paying for the return on the building, I need this and this and this in order to make this work. I need all your incentives in order to facilitate this piece, this piece, and this piece, but they have experience and do that. He has experience in lining up those type of things and working through that process on a long-term fix, but he's got multiple other projects of.
Sure.
Significance going on, and I'm not sure they want to take on another one.
It's good to know it's a possibility if that's the direction we're headed. In previous conversations, both up here and between us, we've talked about public-private partnerships. This sounds like it's moving it totally to a private ownership.
No, if somebody, I don't know until I get it out there, a broker says, we're available for a public-private partnership, we're available for a private, we're available, here's a blank canvas, give us your ideals.
These are still, it's still a possibility.
Absolutely.
Okay. When we're talking about private brokers, I wasn't sure if that'd come off the table.
Well, that's the companies that you, I mean, you're dealing with the signatures, the pilots.
Sure.
The El Capitanis, the CRBNs, you're talking guys that are some worldwide, but most of them are nationwide.
Sure.
That have that ability.
So I'm, oh, go ahead, Bill.
Do we know what the percentage of dry is on the sprinkler system? Because if you had, where the riser comes up and you've got the diaphragm in that one, and heated that room, and the rest of it was all dry, does that help you?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know. I don't know what the percentage of the building that's dry versus wet. I'd have to check with the people that maintain the system to get an accurate assessment of that.
So I'm extremely happy that we're actually doing something, because this is, I mean, it's bothered me for a while that it's, we've talked and talked, and nothing ever came of it. And I'm really, I'm happy that at least we're moving instead of just being stagnant. So with that, I will make a motion that we expend not to exceed $4,000 for the hazardous material study, as well as to allow the city manager to contact any interested third-party broker, government official, et cetera, et cetera, to determine options for the building, including value for the building and the land, but basically to provide options to the board so we can determine what is the next step.
Support.
Okay, I understand the charge. I think that gives me the latitude that I need. My hope is to bring you an update, and I'll add that with the mayor to the agenda when those updates are applicable. These guys working, like this one guy's in Traverse City, he wants to come down, it just takes time to put these things together, and in terms of, my hope next is to bring you results of the testing, remediation costs for that testing if any needed, and then a recommendation on a broker with more background information of what I've learned from interviewing multiple people. Fair enough?
Yep. I'll flag for further conversation down the road as we get closer to taking full action and making a decision on this, both because of the interested parties that we've had and making a decision on this, both because of the interested parties that we've had in this community working on this, but also the history of discourse, decisions we've made on this and referendums and all of this. This may be one of those opportunities for one of our goals for public communication, some sort of public hearing similar to what we've set here for the water rates public hearing to discuss with people who are concerned and make sure they have a chance to be heard and possibly speak to our brokers or whoever's coming in to resolve this crisis for us if we get there.
I'm sorry, you would want, I agree with the town hall, great concept scoped.
Yeah.
I'm not sure you'd want the citizens to ask questions of the brokers?
There, I'm saying that there may be a space for having communication about those. You know as well as I do, we've had a public outcry online that's chased interested folks away from developing the Marine City.
Well, that's what I'm afraid what you have with
Yeah, yeah, we'd want to avoid something like that. But also if we have a passionate project that people are upset about, it's better to talk about it and have it in a space where we can actually have the discussion and resolve those anxieties.
Okay.
Rather than let them fester somewhere online.
I'll keep that in the wheelhouse and see if I can work that in.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Carrion.
Okay, on a new business, we have the CDBG letter of intent submission. Can I have a motion to authorize the submission of the letter of intent to, for the CDBG funds?
So moved. Support.
Got anything you want to?
So this is a tool that we're utilizing, there's, we have access to some CDBG funds. We're talking to one specific developer in regards to a housing project. He contacted the state and MISTDA and he gave us notification today that it will not work for his development. The requirements were too stringent in order to work for his development. I am speaking with another party in terms of utilizing these opportunities as well. So if you would authorize it and then I find one of these parties where it fits and we, either we can be the applicant or they're the applicant, I already have your approval and we'd go forward with it.
Okay. Did we already get one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so roll call vote.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on, can I have a motion to approve ordinance 25-003, an amendment to the fire prevention code adoption for first reading?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 25-003 for first reading. Support.
And this is just for the international fire code?
Yep.
Yes, certainly, ISO operating, we were in, still held, held within three codes.
Okay, all right. All right, any other discussion on this?
With this in our packet, the way the ordinance is written is that our mayor signs to declare it adopted. Is that an issue with her absence tonight? Or do we need to read?
First reading, yeah.
This is just for first reading, that, right, that's okay then?
Yeah, we're good, we're good, for first reading.
All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All righty, now on to the, your favorite. 149 South William Garage demolition. Can I have a motion to approve the demolition of the garage at 149 South William?
So moved. Support.
Do we have an amount?
Yes, we have two amounts. I'd ask you to take the lower bid of the two. The first amount was an estimate by Eagle One Contracting. I contacted four companies, two responded. Eagle One wanted $5,450. The second company is Midland Thomas Services and their bid is $2,950. I'd ask that you take the lower bid. I am trying to work to find grant money for the lady that owns the property to assist in this because it goes onto her tax rolls. I had indicated during the multiple dangerous building meeting, board minutes that she had been, she's attended, she's aware this is going on, that I would try to help financially and work with her as much as possible. But at the end of the day, I got to take that garage down, it's a safety hazard.
Okay, so can you?
I will amend my motion to, oh man, to, sorry, my brain just went foggy for a minute there.
Midland Thomas.
To contract with Midland Thomas for $2,950 for the removal of the garage.
Okay, any other?
Support.
Any other discussion?
Is this being added to the property owner's tax rolls then?
That is
The full amount?
That's the important.
Unless he can find
Unless I can find additional help, I've been working on that, but
And we've been discussing with the owner who has at least stated in the dangerous building hearings, financial hardship is what they had
Correct.
Stated on a couple of occasions.
We had a meeting as of yesterday and she was here again yesterday and repeated the same thing and she's full aware that this is going on, it was going to the board tonight.
How do the taxes being added on roll out then? I mean, I assume we're not given like the full near $3,000 all at once?
Well, generally it is within which tax year we attach it to. It's, it ends up being the county that makes that final determination. One of the things she asked me to look at is splitting it between two different tax years. I'd have to check with the city attorney on the legality of that, I'm not sure that's allowed, but once I get an opinion from him on that, I'll approach the county and see if they're willing to do it. The county is the final say-so.
Sure.
Does she just have one parcel? I forget.
I believe so.
Makes it harder.
Yeah.
If there's something like that possible or a grant that you said you were also looking at, that would be wonderful if possible, something like that comes in to kick in.
I worked hard to get the price at 2950.
You did and I, it's a good bid, I appreciate it. I understand both how we came to the situation and why we're here and that the building's a problem, needs to go, that, all of that makes sense. Inheriting problematic properties, a challenge, right?
Yep.
It's difficult, that's going to happen a lot in this town.
So you're good? All right, everybody, that's it, roll call.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Done. All right, next one is the DPW dump truck purchase. You want to speak on it first or?
So I included multiple photos in your package. I'm distressed to say that we allowed our employees to operate this vehicle for so many years. It was brought to my attention here recently, as you see, the floorboard is no longer there, but they have no wake signs that are screwed up into the bottom of the floorboard so their feet don't touch the ground while they drive the vehicle. You see the frames rusted, the rocker panels on the doors are no longer there, they fashioned street signs in order to rebuild the cab of the vehicle, in order to cover the wiring inside the doors. Long and short of it is, this wasn't even a budgeted item coming up for a couple of years. There's no way that I can have them drive this vehicle, it is not safe. It shouldn't be on the road, the frame is rusted, the box is rusted through, so the tailgate doesn't fit any longer, it'll fall off. If you put something in the back of the bed, it falls on the, you know, roadway whether it be salt or anything else. So there is a vehicle at Lunghammer Ford that's under my deal purchasing, but it's a 2023 vehicle and it's a 2023 Ford F-150 chassis cab with a regular cab. It has everything we need, it has a stainless steel box. In addition, it's already pre-outfitted where generally we buy just the chassis, then we send it out. This one's outfitted with a stainless steel box and a 10-foot V commercial plow and a commercial salter in the back, totally outfitted. The price was $106,428. I know the gentleman that runs this program, I've bought in a lot of previous police cars and other things through him from different cities I was involved in, and he knocked an additional $3,000 off it. It's never been driven, we can go get the truck for the $103,428 and I would strongly recommend that we take this out of fund balance and take this other vehicle off the road and allow me to sell it. All eyes open when the next buyer buys it or scrap it?
Scrap it. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the purchase of the 2023 F-150?
I'll make a motion.
From Lunghammer Ford in the amount of $103,428.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
All right, any discussion?
I'm pretty sure the current truck's an OSHA violation and those things give me an anxiety as the unionist on the board, I got to call this out here. I really implore our department heads to come forward for issues like this and let us know. They should never get to this point. Maybe one sign, but you know, three or four signs being welded onto a vehicle is too many, but please come forward and let us know those issues. Until we saw these photos, I really had no idea how bad this truck was and I don't know how else we'll learn these things other than asking you all, you know, come in here and tell us.
Sheet metal, sheet metal, you've just been thrifty.
Sure, that's why I said one's fine, but you know, you get to two or three, it's too many for me.
I've actually seen that truck going down the road and I questioned it and I talked to the city manager and he said, yes, we know we have a problem, so.
You talked to me?
Yeah.
On this truck?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize, I don't recall the conversation, although I would have took it out the road a month ago.
Yeah.
Is there another one out there?
I'm wondering, do we have another truck out there?
No, they were all in the trees that were cut up.
Okay.
And the bed was, anyway, yeah, it needs to go.
Yeah, it's seen its better day.
All right.
Have a motion?
Yeah, we already have a motion. Roll call vote.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Facilities condition assessment, RFP decision, city manager.
Well, we provided you with a lot of reading in regards to the multiple CIP submissions. So this was on an RFP that went out across the country to evaluate nine facilities for the city, top to bottom. So the facility would be walls, interior, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, roof, roof units. They are to capture the information, so they take a picture of the furnace, determine the year it was installed, what type of furnace is the model, give me the annual cost to maintain it or operate, what's the expected life of that furnace in this type of building? If it was installed in 2020, when will I expect to replace it and what will the cost be when they expect me to replace it? Times nine across nine different buildings. The buildings that we didn't do was the water plant, which is currently under work in terms of capital needs, the wastewater treatment plant, which has a separate CIP already ongoing, and 300 Broadway, which we just put money into for an engineering study and we're kind of going the other direction. We had, I believe, six different responses, let me find my notes here. I also asked Clerk Bell and Scott Atkins and Aaron to review each one of these and rate them independently of me in terms of what they thought was the best proposal based upon the criteria in the RFP. If you look under my assessment, I included the RFP sections that were required in terms of how we scored this and what we were looking for. So as you move down there and you look at that, you'll see how they were scored and then I think you'll see Jason's spreadsheet and you'll also see one from Scott. The long and short of it is we had, and I've got to find, this is a long file, so give me a second here. We had a number of different companies nationwide that made application. We had a couple that were Michigan-based that made. And when you get things like that, I tend to take a look at them and then put them into a spreadsheet and say, okay, if you toss the high one out and you toss the low one out, is your mean somewhere in the middle and do you work from there type deal? So the high number of which I have no idea how they came up with that number was $159,000 and change. And that's from a very reputable firm, I've used them before, Hubbell Rothen Clark, a well-known Michigan-Detroit firm. I don't know if they saw more into this than what there actually is or what they were thinking, but there's not $159,000 worth of work in nine buildings. One of the rules of thumb I like to use is I take their final number, once they're all apples and apples, and then I divide it into 47,000 square feet, that gives me a cost per square foot. They were above $3.40 some cents a square foot, where I had other ones that were at 50 cents a square foot. So see, one was at 15,000, one was 154,000. I pretty much said, you know, great proposal, but you're way out of the park and if you looked at how we rated them, 40% was based on cost, they're going to score very low in that area and that's pretty much going to knock them out. So we really end up dealing with four others. I think I can speak across the board unless Jason wants to offer something that I'm missing or misspeaking here. But if you look through all these, you can see the indepthness of these reports and I've spoken to you in the past about how we're going to layer these in terms of our budgeting and planning for future use in buildings and facilities. I guess without further ado, I want to get to the point that we've come to an agreement that we felt the best out of the bunch was Veritas Bureau, Bureau Veritas, I'm looking for it.
Bureau Veritas.
Bureau Veritas, thank you, you got it, thank you, I still can't find it. So Hubbell Rothen Clark is 159,4840, the P Group from Auburn Hills is 27,000, Capital AE Wildwood, Missouri, 15,000, Bureau Veritas Technical Assessments out of Maryland was 52,833, BBG Real Estate Services Detroit was 23,000, and Axios Inc. was 5770. And if we wanted three other buildings done, they would have tossed those in and made it a total of 76,000 and change. So as we went through the scoring, I scored and I think Jason, you scored Bureau Veritas at the highest, I had them at 85%, I don't remember with Jason, which you had them at and Scott also had them as the highest. We felt that, I won't speak, let Jason speak on this, I felt that they met the RFP, they had a report that was useful to us, more importantly, that the report could then be amended and formulated such to help us going forward. We could add to it, we could make changes, we could change, it wasn't a frozen picture in time and then we have to do something else in order to facilitate changes. So let's say a furnace, they're told us it's going to go in seven years and we're at year seven, we haven't put enough money away and we have somebody inspecting, saying, no, we think you'll get another three years out of this furnace. So then we can change it and import, move it to nine years and then have enough money for it and still, we can move things around and still get it accomplished. There'll be the other days though where it's supposed to go seven years and only goes five years and then we'll struggle to find how we readjust. But the idea is to be able, that you have the ability to readjust. More importantly, I guess out of all this, the first thing I want to stress is, we went through all this work, it's an extensive RFP, there's extensive responses, it'll take a lot of work, they're going to fly in, they'll spend days here, they're going to crawl all over these buildings, they're going to document everything. This one here is almost, you know, $53,000 that we're recommending. If you're not going to use the outcome, if you won't consider, or we're going to get to the point that this is too overwhelming, we're just going to go as we do now and pay from fund balance, then don't authorize this. Don't spend the money if you're not going to use the plan. We're required by state law to have a CIP plan. We're required by state law to present it to the planning commission, then back to the commission and have it adopted. It's required in pretty much all of our financial reports in terms of having plans and how to deal with capital needs and capital assets and how are we going to structure this. It's definitely required in terms of anything we do that's state-controlled or mandated, water plant, wastewater treatment plant, they all require that type of thing, it's right in the requirements. So we've been kind of a little behind at times, but at the end of the day, don't buy the study if we don't actually sit down and take that budget going forward after this year and say, okay, here's a hundred dollars, like I said, five of it's going over here and three's going here and 10's going here because this is doing two years, we can adjust, but we at least start putting money away. Because otherwise, it's a waste of $53,000 and I'll put, I'll create a spreadsheet and
Yeah, but we can't keep letting them go, I mean, we've got enough trouble now from people that, past people that have let them go so long and now it's come down to
We're stuck with the
Do you see what I sent you this morning in terms of infrastructure issues? Well, you see what I sent you this morning in terms of infrastructure issues that.
It's just day after day.
It's day after day.
Can you talk a little bit about why Capital AE is so ridiculously low in cost? I think that was the $15,000 one compared to the others. They're, I think Minnesota-based, is that right? Or?
Yeah, that was Jason.
I think they were out of Colorado.
Colorado?
Colorado or Missouri, one of the two.
Missouri. Thank you. I thought it was an M. But it, it just, it, it's, it's ridiculous that the cost is so, and we talked similar about how the one cost was so high. And I, I read over their proposal and I, I don't understand competitively why they would give us such a low number.
So I look at, first of all, you see some of the clients that some of these businesses do.
Yeah.
They're worldwide corporations.
Yeah.
And then I look at, so I look at the clients. Are they, what kind of buildings are they inspecting? And who's doing the inspection? Is it an engineer? Is it an architect? Is it a building assessment person? What's their experience level? What other projects have they worked on? Several of these products are cities in Michigan, Ferndale, Michigan, Ann Arbor, Michigan, City of Detroit. I try to see what's the background, experience, and how long they've been with the company of the work they're doing. As we look through all this, that's why we felt Veritas, Bureau Veritas was probably the best mixture out of everything we were doing. When, you know, you get what you pay for is really true. When I saw that 15,000, then I looked through the proposals. As Jason said, one of them looked like it was run on a copier. And it was back-to-back like it was, it just didn't, we looked at it and said, okay, not a lot of effort there type deal. But then you dig, dig into the substance. Then there was one that was three inches thick.
Yeah.
You know, it had a lot of stuff in it. And then I thought, this is generic. But he says, no, go take another look at it. And I'm looking through there and it was actually relative to what we were looking at. Okay? We just, you had to work hard to find it. So their, their process wasn't good. The end of the day, we thought the other one was probably the best bet in terms of looking at their building. All I would ask you is to allow me, give me the option of two recommendations. So as an example, the $52,000 one and the next lower one was 27,000, I think. Because it's one thing to get their RFP. It's another thing to sit and talk about their process on the phone, cause I haven't done that yet. And can we come to a contractual agreement? And is their contract something that Bob approved? Is it something that they wanna give me a contract that's based out of Missouri or out of Michigan? Is it, you know, so there's work to be done there yet? And then what's their time schedule? And how does it fit in? And then what work does my staff have to do in order to facilitate that? So there's more work to be done. I may select a couple, but once I get into the mix, it may not work and I may have to pivot to the other one.
What's, what's the name of the company for the 27?
Is that P Group?
You give it to him, Jason.
The 27,000?
Yeah.
Was the P Group?
P Group.
So, I mean, th- this is something that kind of goes near and dear to my heart. It, and I have known I've said it before, but if you don't know where you're going, how can you figure out how to get there? And this is gonna give you a extremely detailed shot of what's coming up in the next 10, 15, 20, 30 years. And it really allows you to budget properly instead of guessing. It's, for, for me, it is money well spent. Because now, not only are you planning appropriately, but if you plan appropriately, obviously every once in a while, something comes up and bites you. But it also means that when something big happens, you're not having to bond out and pay a bunch of interest for it. I mean, that, that's good stewardship for taxpayers' dollars as well. So I mean, I, I have no qualms about, you know, paying the, those $50,000 fees. So I mean, again, you, you do get what you pay for and you want someone crawling through these buildings who really knows what they're looking at. So I mean, I can, I'll make a motion to allow the city manager to contract as a primary with Bureau Veritas for the, for the facilities assessment and as a secondary option with Axios Incorporated.
Support?
Any other discussion?
I, I would consider P Group as a strong secondary personally because of the, one, the cost is, you know, a fairly nice price tag. But being a Michigan-based group, they have strong facilities that they've looked at. They had a strong report.
Yeah, I think that's what he wanted to stick on.
Yeah. That'd be my own personal pitch if you're considering amending second.
Do you have, Mike, do you have any feelings one way or another, or?
It's impossible. Yeah. I gotta get on the phone with them.
Okay.
Leave me an option, I guess, is, is let me work it on the phone and see when I get into the nitty-gritty of it. Then I'm sending Bob contracts. And if he sees something that gives us pause on one, I can pivot right away. This is their busy season coming out of winter now. Everybody's got a budget going. So everybody's gonna do a push on these companies. And it's incredibly important that we get this information this year.
Oh, I agree.
And have a pitch going.
So I, I'll amend my motion for the secondary company to allow the city manager to choose Axios or the P Group based on his best judgment.
Support.
Okay.
That works.
Anything else? If not, roll call.
You good with it?
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. The next thing is the CED board meeting schedule and time change.
Um, we're just making you aware that they've changed the time of their meeting. And after much discussion with that board, we're gonna try a new practice. We have a lot of boards that meet but really don't have a significant agenda or any agenda at all. We end up canceling meetings. We're gonna try an every-other-month approach. And if we find that there's more meetings needed, we'll call a special meeting. And if the every-other-month approach doesn't seem to, we still don't have a lot, then we'll go to quarterly type thing. So we're trying to weed down some of these boards that have multiple meetings every month, but nothing's there. Nothing's accomplished. Nothing's on the agenda. And, and people's time's important. We ask these people to send in these boards, you know, quarterly or every other month might be an easier piece at this point.
What's, what's the time change?
5:30 from 6:00.
Okay. Anything else? I mean, we don't need a motion or anything, but anybody has any other questions on that? Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving right along here. Administrative report. City Attorney.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. City Manager.
I just remind everybody, we have a budget meeting coming up on the 10th. We will have some revised package to put in your book. Please bring your book to the budget as I talk to everybody now. The things that I talked about that were gonna be revised will be in the book and I'll be going over those. We'll change, exchange them out for you. So bring your book. I believe that's on the 10th. Correct?
What time?
At 6 o'clock.
6:00.
6:00. We may also schedule a closed session at that time. That's to be determined. Thank you.
Reports from department heads. Joe, you wanna talk about the truck?
Yes. We received our new truck Tuesday, Tuesday morning. We're gonna have to get it.
What do you have? Tell us who you are.
So we received our new truck Tuesday. It won't be in service, but I'll bring it to one of the next meetings to show everybody. It's gonna take about a month to get brackets and everything for it to put on. And it is very nice. So we thank our community for backing us and buying this and our board. Monday night, we had a fire on Fairbanks, the party store there. I just wanna thank our firefighters and the community and everybody. Out of our 24 firefighters, 20 of our firefighters showed up on scene. So we had over 40 firefighters there from surrounding communities. I know it wasn't a big building, but as Chief Heslop pulled up, we had flames showing through one of the windows. We showed up very quickly after that and it was a quick knockdown, but extensive damage. The investigation has taken place, started already. We'll keep a city manager up on the investigation. It'll be Monday. There'll be a lot of activity over there with the police department, the sheriff's department, insurance, and probably the state police just to determine the cause of this. We have no clue at this time of what caused it. Other than that, I wanna thank Chief Heslop, the cross-training that he's been doing as a pump operator. Come into good use that night. It was his first fire. It let me not have to be tagged right to that truck. I was able to walk around this building and keep my eyes on the, on the firefighters in the building and keep them safe. I'd also like to thank Commissioner May, who was also there assisting with the health and safety of our firefighters as they come out of the building, checking vitals with TriHospital and the community for coming out and offering water, Gatorade, and snacks if we needed them. It was a very quick knockdown, but it, we were there for roughly three, four hours. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Chief. With the, with the multi-jurisdictions, who, who ultimately issues the cause and origin report?
This one is gonna be through the sheriff's department, possibly the state police, working with Chief Heslop and Officer Jim Jones at this time.
Okay.
Just to try to figure out what is going on with it.
Okay.
I have nothing. Okay. Jason?
Nothing this evening.
Oh, oh. Nothing. Okay.
Don't seem so shocked.
All right. We're gonna move on to Commissioner Privilege and liaison reports. Commissioner Clausen.
The only thing I have is, and I have to see if they've come to you yet, but I got a call today about the Rotary Club doing their annual flower sale on Mother's Day weekend. It'll be Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Yeah. Other than that, you know, watch out for this rain. I tell you, everything north of here is just flooded. So.
Commissioner Bryson.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
I wanna thank the 20 firefighters and our chiefs for coming out and everyone else involved in securing and the community's support and quelling the fire and securing that corner grocery has long been a staple for the community. It's where my first job was when I came to this town, you know, years ago as a kid. Appreciate it. Like to see that people are coming together. Times like this, we really do have to come together for it. So thank you all for doing that. It's important, important work. Other than that,
I would echo what, what Commissioner O'Brien said. Having been there at the fire, the fire department had a, an extremely quick response. It was my understanding, I mean, granted, I wasn't inside the structure. I don't enjoy heat. But they, they had some obstacles in there with, with the ceiling and whatnot. And just seeing how all of the departments were together, up to and including the police departments, I, you just, it's always amazing to see. It's a tough situation. Everybody communicated well. As usual, Joe's leadership on scene provided a quick knockdown. So again, I would say an excellent job.
The Washington Life Center Blessing of the Bikes and the Poker Run is on May 17th, between 10:00 and 4:00 PM. It's an annual event. It's usually a lot of fun in that. So just keep it on your calendar. That's all I got.
All right. I'll keep it kinda short. I wanna thank Joe and all the guys. I mean, as chair of the Fire Authority, I've worked with you guys all the time. They always do a phenomenal job. Jackie was across the street watching. It was hard for her. It was hard for everybody. And we all feel for Raj too, cause he put so much into that store. So, anyway, we hope, hope it all works out. And we thank you guys. The other thing is, we had the Anita's Pizza fundraiser for the Marines of the Old Newsboys last night. It was very well-attended. Debbie Owens did a phenomenal job putting this together and getting all the raffle baskets. And the event went flawlessly. Mary Kay Bukowski assisted Debbie and made a beautiful Afghan to raffle off. And I wanna thank Anita's for having this event and all of their staff who worked the event. Those people work really hard. I also wanna thank everyone who donated raffle baskets and gift cards and everyone who attended and bought tickets. We gave away over 30 items. And for a three-hour event, we made a little over $1,300. So that was really nice. So we wanna thank everybody in the community for their continued support for the Old Newsboys. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?